And welcome to the March 7th Town Council Meeting located here at Town Hall. This meeting is broadcasted live on Channel 23. It can also be viewed live at www.carolmediacenter.org as well as the town's Facebook page. I will call this meeting to order, and if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and our mayor would like to make a comment regarding Ukraine.
Thank you, Council President. Though Mount Airy is a small town in Maryland, we have learned of several residents who are monitoring the Russian invasion into Ukraine with sincere concern for loved ones and friends. All of us sitting at the front of the room are wearing ribbons with the colors of the Ukrainian flag to show our equaled concern and sincerest sympathy for those who have already been lost to the atrocities inflicted by the Russian military or displaced as refugees fleeing their homes to protect their families. We can only imagine the heartache felt by those who have survived a global pandemic only to have their lives thrown into the utter chaos of a premeditated and unjust war. When I think of our many issues that continue month after month here in Mount Airy and then ponder the thought of the emotional tolls that must be felt by the elected or appointed officials in any of the 75 comparable small towns scattered across Ukraine, it comes into perspective. We are so fortunate. We have a really good year. We should be thankful that every morning when the sun comes up, for the most part, our biggest concern is where and what are we going to eat for dinner. There is indeed a reason why we are the beacon of hope for so many who come to this country. Please keep the citizens of Ukraine in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments. At this time, we'll move to public comments. So if there's any citizens or residents that would like to make a comment, please come on out to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name's Larry Valli. I'm a resident of Mount Airy. I live at 1108 Medagreen Drive. Since December, I've been leading a group of citizens in efforts to promote the funding and restoration of the Smith Building, commonly known as the Flatiron Building, in downtown Mount Airy. Our core group of members consists of myself, Charles Beck, Jim Molesworth, Jim Linton, Terry Baker, and John Simpson. And most recently, on February 1st, the Historical Society of Mount Airy voted their support towards our preservation efforts as well. Our position regarding the restoration of the building has been pretty clear, which is simply that we believe there's intrinsic and commercial value in preserving the building as part of Mount Airy's historic district. Small-town historic charm is found along Main Street, and residents and visitors alike love our historic streetscape. Efforts to preserve the building as a centerpiece of a revitalized downtown can be exploited as a commercial attraction for visitors and an economic boon for commercial business. More to the point, with a vision towards preservation, we believe that there's other funding options available and a variety of grant programs and fundraising opportunities to help the town offset costs concerning the disposition of this property. We've been committed to this project, and we understand the town's concerns about ADA compliance and pedestrian safety, and we've continued our efforts to establish networks, find solutions, pursue funding opportunities, and to keep the council members and the mayor informed of our position and our efforts. In just the last few months, our group has had four meetings on December 13th, January 4th, January 19th, and February 2nd. We prepared public position papers and a history paper on the old building. We've done social media posts on December 18th, 19th, and 22nd in an effort to notify the town of the situation and our status. We've done a petition drive, which is still ongoing, began on December 18th. We've received the Historical Society's vote of support on February 4th, on February 1st, and in recent months, we've coordinated with Preservation Maryland in early January, which resulted in a meeting with the mayor and a few of the town members, town staff, on January 26th, and most recently on February 23rd, where they sent the engineer to help assess the building. Also, we met with the New Windsor Town Manager and their Grants Coordinator on February 16th, and I met with the mayor of New Windsor, the former mayor, on February 21st to talk about their successful grants efforts in preserving the historic Dealmen Inn. We've also met with the Brunswick City Grants Coordinator to talk about their historic preservation projects and successful grant opportunities. Most recently, we developed a model of a pedestrian walk-through concept, shared that concept with members of the Town Council, as well as Preservation Maryland and the engineer during the week of February 21st. We've sent emails to council members and the mayor on each of our positions and our progress on December 27th, January 2nd, January 7th, February 6th, most recently on February 28th. We've also put out notifications of our position and requests during the Historical Society newsletter during the week of March 1st, and also the Four County Catch magazine during the week of March 1st. Most recently, I've connected with Cindy Stone, who's the Director of Community Development Program for the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development on March 3rd. So as you could see, we've accomplished quite a lot in a short period of time. And really to this end, I'd like to ask the council to allow me to give a PowerPoint presentation of our proposal during the May meeting. I would like to include some proposed solutions, a scheduled plan of action with some funding sources, some financial deadlines and due dates, and accompany that with a written report for each of the council members. I hope that the council could consider this request, and I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Valli. Appreciate it. Anyone else with public comment for the council? Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to the approval of the council meeting minutes and close minutes. Right now, we have February 2022, the Town Council Meeting Minutes. I'll make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember under seconds. Any discussion or anything? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this time, I just want to quickly remind the public of some of our public hearing that will be coming up on April 4th. At 6:20 PM, we will have a public hearing on Ordinance 2022-4, the proposed changes to the CC Community Commercial District. At 6:30 PM, we will have our Riegler Annexation Resolution Number 44. And at 6:50 PM, we will have Green Tree Mixed Use Community Commercial Joint Planning Commission and Town Council. Will be happening at the April meeting. Next up is Chief Reitz to give his monthly police report. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Chief Reitz with the Mount Airy Police Department here to provide the monthly activities report for the Mount Airy Police. During the month, we had several trainings and meetings that we attended. We had required two-hour block of farm classroom instruction for MPTC. We also had Corporal Ginevra, Officer Saroye, and Bridges attended mental health first aid training at the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. I attended a local chiefs meeting in Carroll County, as well as myself and Corporal Brooks attended the Main Street Safety Task Force meeting. I'll allow Councilman Demoter, I'm sure he's got a lot to say about that, so I won't comment too much on that. For community outreach, again, I'd like to remind everybody that we have a prescription and over-the-counter medication disposal box at the station. The public's welcome to come in and dispose of their unwanted medications in that dropbox, and then we submit them for destruction as a community service. Also, please stay up to date on our website or Crime Watch page as well for up-to-date information. During the month of February, we handled 673 calls for service. That's a little over a 14% decrease from January and a little under a, or right around a 13% decrease from last February 2021. For traffic enforcement, during the month, we conducted 72 traffic stops, we issued 47 citations and 65 warnings, and six safety equipment repair orders. We affected one DUI arrest and made three other traffic arrests. For criminal enforcement, some of the significant incidents and crime trends that we're seeing, we handled four shoplifting cases. We had one theft of vehicle parts, actually several for that. We had three other thefts as well of vehicle parts, where they were stealing catalytic converters for precious metals and catalytic converters. We had, one of them occurred on Trune Circle and additional two victims down in the industrial park on Rising Race Drive. We had several fraud schemes. One of them was involving a resident who lost approximately $5,000 to a fraud scheme where they, someone called them and said that they had, a family member had been injured in an accident, or they need some money to help them, and then they actually sent someone to the residence and picked up the money, or picked up a check or whatever. We had an identity fraud, credit card fraud, and a prescription fraud. During the month, we had 22 Group A offenses, and they included eight larceny thefts, four fraud offenses, three assault offenses, three destruction, destruction of property offenses, two drug narcotic offenses, one counterfeit forgery, and one embezzlement. We had nine Group B offenses, and four of them were just basically all other offenses, three drunk, involving drunkenness, and one family offense, nonviolent, and then one driving under the influence. And during the month of February, we made, the department made eight criminal apprehensions. It is notable to note that there was no overdoses, opioid overdoses in town this month, so that's a good sign. There's also one other thing. Ms. Heather asked me to do this. We are participating in a, where we've been nominated for the 2022 Rise Against, or Rise Agency Award. We have the opportunity to support the Mount Airy Police Department Community Services Fund, which is, that's established to support community outreach programs to benefit the community. Of course, we need the town's support to vote for Mount Airy Police Department. The agency gets, getting the votes, the agency gets, getting the most votes receives a $7,500 check to support community programs, which allows us to give back to the community. So please go on our webs, or on our Facebook page and click on the link and go vote for us, and you can vote as often, you know, up to one time a day, so vote as many days as you can between now and when they make the decisions. And that will be the chief's report, or police department report. Does anybody have any questions?
Councilmembers?
Just one, Chief. When the, you mentioned there was the fraud scheme.
Correct.
If someone has a concern over that, do you don't mind going out and talking to them?
Absolutely not.
Or showing up if they say someone's coming out to...
Absolutely. Right, right. Absolutely. We urge everybody, if there's any questions, to call us, and, you know, we're there to, ready to come out and do whatever we need to do to help them or assist them. A lot of these things, there's so many different schemes and fraud that go around, and it's basically, it's, is whatever the imagination can come up with, that they can, whatever scheme. But usually, when you get phone calls like this, it's best to check it out, you know, and there's no problem at all with calling the police department, and we'll either, you know, give you guidance on the phone or come out and do whatever we need to do.
There's nothing more intimidating, seeing a police vehicle in front of the house that you're supposed to pick up money, they're going to turn right around and...
We would absolutely hope that. So, yes.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
All right. Councilmembers, Bruce Waltz is, excuse me, is out of town, and he sent the report to me, and I forwarded it to you this morning, so you have the numbers for February. Next up will be our Civil Air Patrol Report, presented to us by Captain Rolfe. Captain?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Captain Rolfe, Civil Air Patrol. This is our report for the month of February 2022. Our major missions and significant activities, we had no assigned missions during this period. The squadron did complete a Air Force-directed biannual unit inspection, which is a requirement that we have throughout the program with zero discrepancies. In community support, we provided representatives to the Garrison Force Veterans Ceremony for an unaccompanied veteran's burial ceremony held by the Maryland Department of Veteran Affairs. We also signed a new facilities use letter with the Isaac Walton League out on Woodville Road to support increased access and participation in activities on property, and conducted initial reach-outs to other emergency service organizations in the area, specifically the Trot SAR Mounted Search and Rescue Team and the Western Maryland K-9 SAR Team. For qualifications and achievements, one of our cadets achieved her first milestone promotion, and I'm just going to call her out because she's in the room, Sergeant Graceful Action. We also had four additional members that have started the ground team member training pipeline, one member that has started the ground team leader training pipeline. Once that individual has completed his qualification, that will effectively double our operational capacity. Under significant training, we completed required annual operational risk management training for all squadron personnel, which is another nationally-directed requirement that we have. We also completed over 12 man-hours of radio communication training and 20 hours of ground team fundamentals training. Under flight time, nothing to report for this period. During the month of February, we added one new cadet member, bringing our total up to 39 total personnel. Under operational status, the wing has returned to Phase 3 in response to the rapidly declining COVID numbers across the state. This shift effectively removes any restrictions we have to our meeting size and our vehicle capacity. Masks remain optional for all personnel unless otherwise directed by local authorities. Our ground team remains fully mission-capable at this time. Coming up, we have, squadrons have been asked to participate in a training exercise with the Western Maryland K-9 SAR Team on March 20th, and we also participated in a wing-level search and rescue exercise. Because this is a February report, that's in the future, however, that actually happened over this past weekend. And not on my paper, but a couple of things I want to highlight that have come up recently. Our squadron participated in a competition sponsored by NASA to develop technologies and ideas for growing sustainable food in space, and we are one of five high school-level finalists across the country. So our cadets are doing a great job in that regard. And this past week, also not on the report, the mayor came out to actually help present awards to all our members in recognition of the COVID-19 mission, which is the longest Civil Air Patrol mission since World War II. So mayor, thank you for coming out for that. Any other questions? That completes my report.
Councilmembers, any questions for Captain? All right, thank you, Captain. I appreciate it. All right, we'll move into new business. This is the recommendation for trash collection services presented by Barney Quinn. Barney?
So we bid out our trash collection services. Our current hauler didn't want to exercise the third renewal, the three-year renewal. It's been six years, and, you know, a lot of things change in six years. So we rebid it out, and they were one of the bidders. We had two bidders in total, and the lowest bid was from J&amp;J Trash, J&amp;J Inc., in the amount And we just recommend moving forward with them. We made just a few changes to the contract instead of having them give us a price after three years, which is the way the current contract is. You know, there wasn't any built-in increases in between, just every three years, they would give us a new price. If we accepted, they would take it. In this case, we're raising it based on a consumer price index, which is what one of the contractors had requested that we do, and that just seemed to make sense. So, you know, if their costs are going up, then, you know, this will go up equally.
All right. So, quick question. Do you, you may not happen to know, and I apologize. Do you happen to know what, or maybe Councilman Demoter, do you happen to know what we're paying or what their contract is now?
I don't have it in front of me, but maybe the town has that number. Didn't it go, how much did it go up by, Barney?
I believe it went up by at least $100,000.
I was going to say $100,000.
It's a significant amount. We did expect that.
Okay.
But we find that's reasonable. You know, we've seen some numbers out there from other bids.
So is that, is that what their final, their final number was going to be? Like, let's say it was hypothetically, the, let, $100,000 less. It was $330,000, let's just say. Is that what their final three-year term was going to be? And then they decided not to do it? I'm just wondering why, why they, why they canceled, then they rebid, and now we're going back with them again?
Right. So they could have just given us a new price. They, I think, I can only assume what, you know, they might have thought, it's too much of an increase, they're not going to give us that. So we would, you know, they'd rather us rebidding, so we did that.
Okay.
You know, you could see what the other cost is. I mean, sometimes they bid based on, you know, if they have the trucks for it, or if they need to buy trucks, so I can only assume the second bidder was somebody who, if they got it, they would have to buy new trucks.
Right.
And, you know, really escalate the cost.
Okay.
But it could have happened either way, and this way happened.
Is, last question is, are these two bidders, are they the only ones that are in town? I know that they, I know that maybe other ones did not choose to bid, which is fine. Are these the only ones that could sufficiently provide a service for us?
So I think Mary had mentioned, because I don't remember for sure, but Waste Management, we normally get a price from that.
Right.
We used to have Key Sanitation, but there's, there's a number of them, a number of others out there.
Okay. I feel like, I just feel like personally, I'm like looking at DirecTV and Comcast, like, and these are our choices.
Yeah.
And we're stuck at, we're stuck, like, J&amp;J's great, they're in town.
Right.
We've been with them for a while. I don't necessarily have a problem with the costs, I want to keep an upstanding relationship. I hope they, they think the same thing.
Yeah, and, you know, we've had nothing but good service from J&amp;J.
Right.
You know, working with them, I know Mary deals with them a lot, and she's been very pleased with them.
Okay.
So I, you know, I see no reason why not to, you know, continue with them.
Sure. Those were my questions. Any other councilmembers?
Yeah, and just to follow up, I mean, and J&amp;J has attended our Recycle and Sanitation Commission meetings. They did tell us that they were intending to just rebid onto a new contract, so we've been aware of this. And they've generally, I think our commission has been generally happy with, with their support and performance, and, like, for example, the Downtown Trash Center, Recycle Center, we needed some additional pickups there, and they're doing additional pickups, so they're trying to be responsive, and I think in general, we've been pleased with them. And I recall talking to Mary about, I think she was putting in an extra $100,000 into the budget for a request, so that aligns with how much more we're paying, obviously, than from the previous contract, so I'm supportive.
Any other councilmembers?
I just got one compliment for Barney, for the town engineer. No, thank you for answering my questions I sent to you earlier regarding the cost, it was annual and that, and then you covered some of the other concerns I sent you tonight about price adjustments, because I knew that was a, that was a concern of why they didn't rebid the contract. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to get back into that circumstance again with costs going, going up. But I like the idea of the CPI adjustment on an annual basis. So, thank you.
Question, because my first year seeing one of these. So line six, can you clarify for me, price for Christmas tree pickup, $2,340 per tree?
Those are expensive trees.
So if I put my tree out, it's costing $2,000? No.
No, it should say per tree pickup.
Per, so if they're all being picked up on a Saturday, that's the cost for the day?
Yeah, they set one day for tree pickup, and that's, that's the price for it.
I was going to ask the same thing about the bulk, because I was like, dang, those are expensive trees. So it's just $2,300 each day we do.
I'll be honest, when I read the prices at the bid opening, I read it, and I was like, $2,300 per tree? I'm like, wait a minute.
We get some nice fake trees at $2,300.
I better wait till the second bid, I opened the second bid.
$6,000 per tree?
Yeah, so it was...
It's per pickup.
Tree day.
Tree day pickup.
That would be expensive.
That's, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. All right, perfect.
Council President. I just wanted to let you know, Charlene's downstairs, and she sent up the number, and it's, it's $140,000 more than last year, and I do know that J&amp;J was, was starting to hurt by the end of this contract, you know, with the inflated gas prices and prices of everything else. So, so it's in line with that. The real question's going to be on the budget, how do we make up for that money? And we'll have to be creative and find a way to do it, so.
Sounds good. I mean, they could have just said gas alone, and obviously, you know, when you're dealing with a CDL, it's whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the approval for the town recommendation of J&amp;J Trash Service to continue in the amount of $436,352. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Demoter, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, contract's awarded to J&amp;J. All right, next up is, I just wanted to give a brief summary of our first Charter Amendment The Town Council and the mayor began with 2021-2, which is transferring the position of CFO, Chief Financial Officer position to the Town Administrator from the mayor. Along the way, we added some language that the Town Administrator will handle the day-to-day activities. We added some language that the mayor in consultation with the Town Administrator. We clarified that the council will receive a monthly expense registry. We also asked that the pronouns would be more appropriate, and we ended the workshop on Chapter 16-14, overdue liens and taxes. At this time, councilmembers, I would like to schedule our next meeting and get this on the books. If you don't mind, I would like to make a proposal of March 30th. Six o'clock. Does that work?
That works for me.
Work?
Yes, that works.
It does.
The next charter workshop will take place on March 30th at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. The public is welcome to attend. We are not taking public comment, but you are more than welcome to attend. This is an opportunity for the council members and the mayor and other town staffers to work out the language, and then we will take public comment once we iron out some of those Thank you, councilmembers. Next up is commission appointments and reappointments. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, this month, I'd like to make the recommendation for appointment. Leslie Dickinson to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. Do you want these broken up, or you want...
You can read all of them, and then I'll break them up for vote.
Leslie Dickinson to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. Judy Stoll to be reappointed to the Board of Appeals as a full member. reappointed to the Board of Appeals as a full member, as she's currently the alternate. And then Jeanette Bingaman is the one that you had the application for. I believe you had the modified one that says the date was received two seven twenty-two, and it was received by Colleen. And so that application is there. Talk to the chairman of each of those, and they support those nominations.
I actually don't have any dates on the Jeanette's application. Am I missing something?
In that case, the date is, the date received was two seven twenty-two.
And what was the received?
It was received by Colleen.
Oh, thank you. All right, council members, we'll go through one by one. First recommendation by the mayor is Leslie Dickinson to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay by Councilwoman Reed.
And Lynn?
And Lynn?
Be two.
Sorry Lynn. That'll be two. My apologies. Three to two. Leslie Dickinson will be reappointed to the Planning Commission. Next up for reappointment is Judy Stoll to be a full-time member to the Board of Appeals. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Judy Stoll will be reappointed to the Board of Appeals as a full member. Last up is Jeanette Bingaman to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Mr. Mayor? Moving right along, we go into ordinances and resolutions. First up is ordinance 2022- two, the development fees. This is up for adoption. I'll make a motion for ordinance 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry, I was...
I, I heard and saw. She only saw.
Okay.
Councilmember Mundur, seconds. All right, we'll go into discussion. This is concerning the development fees. I don't, I don't really have anything to begin with, so if anyone would like to speak up, so do.
Okay, I do. Thank you, Council President. So, I know there's been a lot of work on this package, on this impact fee renewal. And I just, I really appreciate all, all the work that Councilmember Galetti has done, Councilmember Mundur, Barney Quinn, the town engineer, all the town staff, the mayor. There's been a lot of work put into this. And I, as well, because I had some concerns about wanting to see the basis for the derivation of the fees. So I've been working over the past week and a half with town staff and the mayor, providing questions and suggestions. So I've been engaged in the process as well. So I think the package is, is something that I could support. I would like, though, and these are additions, but they're to help the package, they're not any questions about the package. So I've handed around to you two pieces of paper. The first one has text on it, and what I'm proposing is, I have suggested insertions to go into section C of the supporting memorandum. And simply what this does, this insertion describes how the, the safety fee was derived. I thought because this is a new fee that we're, we're implementing, I didn't see a discussion of how that was derived. So I'm suggesting that this short paragraph be inserted. And this is based on information from Barney, and I've coordinated this with our mayor as well. So if, if you, as council members, are good with that, I am good with the memo package. And then the second thing is...
Can I just pause real quick?
Yes.
Yours says section C before the words "currently the town." And I'm looking at C, and I see inspection.
Oh, I'm talking about the memo. I'm talking about the supporting package, the memorandum, not the ordinance, though.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not, you're talking about my memo.
Yes.
Okay.
I missed, what I'm referring to is...
I thought you were making changes to the ordinance. I apologize.
No, 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 sorry.
Can I just back Council, Councilmember Mund, um, Demoter up, Council President? I do want to point out to you guys that his changes here have to do with the mayor's memorandum, which are not part of the ordinance. So the changes he has for the ordinance are just going to be structural in nature on this, on the one.
Okay.
It's not changing any of the numbers or where the numbers go.
Correct.
He just did a much better detail of, you'll see in a second, he's...
I was just looking at C.
Yeah, no, please, these are...
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't...
I was very confused, because we were talking about the ordinance, and now we're in a memorandum.
Yeah, it won't be part of the ordinance, it's just the mayor's memo to us. But the next part is, is just a formatting thing for the ordinance.
No problem, thank you.
But to me, and what I brought up at the last meeting, I think the supporting memorandum, that's what I was asking for, is a supporting package that described kind of soup to nuts, how were these numbers derived? And then that goes as part of the record that supports the ordinance. And I think the town has delivered on that. And what I'm asking for is the insertion of this section that describes how the safety impact fee was derived, which I, which I think is consistent. Is that correct, Barney?
Can you just read that for the record, please?
Yes. So what I'm proposing is an insertion that says, "The town's fees for public safety are based on the town's capital improvement plan, line items providing estimated cost for construction of a police station, per-en four million, also allowing for a projected increase of five hundred thousand closed per-en, and police equipment to include vehicles, radios, body cameras, and other items, per-en one point five six million closed per-en. Applying the methodology described earlier results in a public safety fee of seventeen hundred dollars."
So we're just, we're really just outlining the public safety, capital improvements?
Yes, we're...
More specifically?
We're, we're explaining how the number was derived, so that if somebody wants to see that, they can go to this memo and understand it.
Okay.
Yes.
And can I just add one more? Mayor, you're okay with that change to your memo?
Yes, I think it takes my C paper and turns it into a B plus.
Dooley, no.
I would say that, can I have a minute?
Yes.
The first time we started talking about adjusting the impact fees here was, was 2018, the summer of 2018. And it's a, it's a bear to go through this and, and make sure that you have it all correct. So there were, there were a lot of spoons in the chili here. So, you know, I equal what Councilmember Demoter said. It took a lot of people to get it done and to justify it to the point that we have. You know, I think that we're on extremely solid ground. I do appreciate the effort that you put into it, and I don't object to changing my memorandum and adding that adjustment to it. I think ultimately we have a really good, sound product here, and, you know, in three years, we should revisit it again. So, so thank you for, to everyone for the work you did on this.
And I have two more I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that I've handed out, unless you're good with it. But I'm also suggesting a replacement to the very last paragraph of the memorandum. So the, the original paragraph was basically the mayor's letter out to us saying, please review this. Now that this will become the final memorandum, I'm proposing we add language that says, "This memorandum will be archived and serialized as part of the town's official records documenting the process for updating town impact fees." Thus, it would become part of the record. And the idea here is, as I brought up at the last meeting, let me phrase it differently. So Mr. Barney Quinn wins the Mega Millions and the Power Bowl and the Town Car Raffle, all in the same month, decides to like go to a tropical island and take half the staff with him. There's a record of how these impact fees were arrived at, and it shows that they can be reproducible. That is the whole purpose of the memorandum. And then finally, there is a table that I've handed out. This table is to replace this table in your package. And it essentially, it's all the same information. No numbers have changed. It just regroups the various fee categories in a way that aligns with the previous table that's in the package. So that's what this is all about, is having a good record. And I think it's a good, in a way, model for, as the town makes other decisions, they can put it together in a memorandum for the record and, and file it. And I think this goes along with the mayor's idea that he says he's going to start implementing, which is serializing these. So there's a numbered series of memorandums that can be tracked. So those, the basis to the memorandum, and with those changes, I can support in a positive way the ordinances for impact fees.
Any other comments from council members for 2022-2?
I would just like to say thank you for the town staff doing, uh, go ahead. I'll let the town attorney speak first.
To clarify, does the motion seek to approve the ordinance with the amendments from when it was introduced, as reflected in the red lines? There were a couple of changes.
In addition to, I, I wasn't, I wanted to make, if anyone wanted to encapsulate anything else, I was going to do it all together?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool. No problem. I don't go against the attorney's advice, so I want them to speak first. Okay, I'll go ahead. Sorry, I make jokes. No, I just would like to say thank you for the town staff to do it, doing this. It's been far too long since we've addressed this issue. I also like the, hopefully, the review or just getting together every couple of years to say, do, do they or do not, do they need to be adjusted, or don't they? That way at least we'll be up, up to date. And so thank you, and thank you to the mayor for answering my questions on these, and made me able to understand the memo better. So thank you.
Try not to ask them at midnight.
I'll try not to, but sometimes that's the only time I get to read.
Oh, it's good. Thank you.
The only thing I'll say is that when we do make a motion to vote, we're not actually making a motion to approve memo changes. We're just making a motion to approve the ordinance, right? Like, the memo changes are just administrative.
Yes.
Yeah. So that wouldn't be included in the motion.
I just want to say, like Councilman Mundur said, thank you to staff. We started work on this in January, I believe it was, and everybody that got involved in all the detail. And if anybody does have any questions, it's all spelled out really nicely now, and gives you the numerical substantiation for these increases, which I believe is much needed since they haven't gone up since 2007.
Yeah, correct.
So thank you, everybody, for all the time you put in.
I appreciate it. Was, Holly, was there any reason that I had two copies?
I cannot answer that, but I think Tom can. It sounds like one is the ordinance that was introduced last month, and one is, whoa, the amendments from last meeting.
Right, right. So, the bigger copy or the smaller copy?
The one where the margin's a little bigger on the right side, as, or the...
Big font, little font?
The little font shows the red line changes.
Okay. So I want to look at this?
Big font is just the same thing, but clean.
Oh, we'll look at the big one then. All right. So as stated, there were a couple of red line changes. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate all of the hard work from you and, and town staff on putting this together. Thank you, Councilman Demoter and, and Councilwoman Galetti, for all of your work on this. As stated by the council members, this needed to be done. You can tell by some of the number changes that gas prices go up, so do other things. We got to make, we got to make changes. So, so be it. I already made a motion, so we'll go ahead and go to a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2022-2 with the new approved changes, please vote.
Wait, let me just ask. So, understanding, I'm asking...
You're fine.
Understanding the memo changes will be updated, is that correct?
Yes.
Those are all accepted?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
I think you're, doing your question toward me, and I've already agreed to that.
Yeah.
I'm just double checking.
Those are his, those are his words, and if he's good with it, then so are we.
Okay, because that's what I needed to see to support.
Yep, no problem.
Council President, can we clarify? We're voting on the ordinance, not the memo, not the mayor's.
This, yep.
And the only change is the, the spreadsheets, the chart he did is the same, it's just broken down more clearly.
Correct.
So that's all we're voting on, is that?
Not, essentially, yes.
The ordinance.
You got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. All right, we'll try one more time. All those in favor of 2022-2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Woo-hoo!
Thank you, everybody. All right. We'll move on to ordinance 2022-3, the public safety impact fees. This is also up for adoption, and I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Reed, seconds. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any? I'll go ahead and call the vote for ordinance 2022-3 for the impact fees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-two passes. Twenty-two dash three passes, sorry. We'll move along to unfinished business. This is the amended Center Street water main replacement. We're going to take a look at this as an emergency, please, presented by Barney.
Yep, and this is just the same as it was last month. Just looking to take where we saved money on Center Street Water Main Replacement and do the first three hundred feet of water main replacement on Prospect.
Thank you, Barney. Since there's no changes, I would like to make a recommendation for an emergency approval by town council. The town staff recommends to the town council the approval of the Center Street Water Main Replacement in the total amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to Ross Contracting. This is an emergency vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes as an emergency.
Let's make a note on that. That is coming out of the ARPA funding, correct?
It is. Nothing changed.
Yeah, and if I can make a comment as well. This is the, this is, Mr. Swanson came up and spoke on this last month, and we've exchanged a few emails, and he made some good recommendations going forward, and I'll implement them as the mayor to, as to how the budget is configured. So I appreciate your comment last month. I think it was worth waiting a month for no other reason than to clarify between the, the staff, myself, and, and citizens, what, what exactly was going on. So thank you.
Thank you. And nothing's changed, so we didn't lose any time. We're all good. All right. Next up is the flat iron building updates. I kept this on here to, to allow the mayor to provide a couple of updates. Council, you heard a few updates from Mr. Valetti tonight. Mayor, would you like to add anything to what Mr. Valetti discussed?
Yeah, it's a valet.
Oh, valet. Sorry.
I get it.
I apologize.
I'm going to spell it every time that I...
Sorry, Larry. I'll just call, see, I was trying to be really official. Look where it got me.
It sounds fancy.
It does.
So, the only thing I would put up there is, I just would like to have a reminder for the public. Are we looking at May for the timeframe that you have put down, and I believe January as the, the date that you would expect to have things back regarding the other three plans for the flat iron building?
So my other bullet was to check with Barney on progress with Design Collective. If you have heard anything, are we still good on the May timeline?
As far as I know, we're still good on the May timeline.
Okay.
We don't have anything to present to you just yet, but, yep.
I didn't, I didn't expect anything, but just wanted to, if you, a, you know, just let the town council, we're going to be delayed thirty days, or you haven't gotten any phone calls like that, right?
Yep.
Sounds good. So technically, May is still it.
So I think that, you know, I would recommend and hope that...
So I think that, you know, I would recommend and hope that, that you would allow Mr. Valetti to make that presentation at the May meeting, so you'll have the three options that are on the table currently, but now you'll have a fourth option as well, which would be the restoration of the building using a group of volunteers at Task Force and, and coordination with Preservation Maryland. So, so you'll have four things to choose from instead of three. So that's, that's what we're working for.
All right, and Larry, Mr. Valetti, we do have some requirements to do a presentation, so if you can just contact Town Hall, and Holly, our town clerk, will give you those, those details, okay? Thank you, sir. All right.
Council President, I have a follow-up question.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, so first, let me just disclose, consistent with Town Council Policy Number Seven, disclosure of contacts with interested parties. I, I, as a council member, participated in both of the Preservation Maryland meetings. During the last meeting, which was a walk-through with the flat iron building, the Preservation Maryland engineer, I thought I heard him say he would write something up based on his quick kind of drive-by look around at the building. Do you know when you might get that write-up?
I met with Larry Valetti this morning, and we talked about that. Did you, he was going to make a call. So we're waiting to hear back, but we do not have a document in our hands from that engineer.
Okay.
Restoration engineer.
Thank you. It'll be interesting to look at the totality of all the information available that we're going to use to try and make a judgment. And just to remind everybody, the, the town did a structural assessment 10 years ago, so it'll be interesting to see what, if anything, Preservation Maryland says in some sort of a write-up compared to the town study. So I just wanted to give that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to mayor, council, and staff reports. And, Mr. Mayor, we'll begin with you.
All right, thank you so much, Council President. And again, thanks for all the work that has gone on. Tonight's actually been pretty quick, so. I won't go over the calendar events I went through, I'll just the highlights of my notes. We have hired a full-time human resources employee, that is Cheryl Knight. So as you come into Town Hall, she'll be sitting at the desk that Mary Van Meter used to be sitting at after Katie was sitting there. I forget, that desk is rolling around. So, but behind Katie, too, you'll find Cheryl Knight. So please say hi to her and welcome her aboard the town staff. Town staff is utilizing the Clipper magazines to disseminate information on upcoming events. The town will continue to purchase two pages of advertising in the Four County Catch. We will advertise events, recap the council meeting, and put out some town features. I had this on my report last month, but I just want to keep putting it out there because it'll take a few months for people to realize that the Four County Catch is also a news source. Further down, Chick-fil-A traffic is still being monitored. I did meet with the staff, council members, Galetti, and Reed, and we talked about financing concerns of the traffic circle and the required property acquisitions, which should be coming up on the agenda next month. We just need to make sure they get on there. Volunteer of the Year, on February 9th, we selected the awardee for 2021. The volunteer year of the award, or Volunteer of the Year Award is being updated to recognize the volunteer spirit celebrated by Mayor Rockenberg and will now be awarded in his honor. But we're extremely grateful to Mayor Frank Johnson's role in honoring all the previous recipients. The dinner is March 24th, it's at 6:00 p.m. There's a one-hour social period, and that's at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Activities Building. The community garden project is underway. I'd like to say thank you to the Rotary Club for their grant and manpower provided for this project. They had a workday on April 5th and installed the gates and worked on the fence as well. Thank you to Ashley Collier, Council President Jason Poirier, and the Sustainability Commission for working so hard on that project. Further down, the Historical Society's Bag and Basket Bingo, which was scheduled for February 26th, is rescheduled to June 24th, 2022. So, so the bingo's going to happen, but it's not going to happen until June.
I'm sorry, where, where is the bingo?
That's at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Carnival grounds as well. Code enforcement issues, we are fully cognizant of the deviations from the town code and starting to enforce the flag, feather, banner compliance. To be fair in this, because we kind of let this go on through all of COVID, we're notifying the businesses who are not compliant throughout the month of March and planning on firm enforcement in April. So some of those feather flag banners that are stuck close together will start disappearing and will go back into compliance in April. Last note from there is that on March 4th, Councilmember Munder beat me in a friendly race to the Volunteer Fire Company Drive-Thru Dinner by 10 minutes, and it was terrible. I had to sit back there in line and watch him get his dinner before me, so.
And it was delicious.
Yes, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move to Recreation and Parks Board. Council Secretary Reed.
Yep, the Recreation and Parks Board met on February 17th. Our next meeting is March 17th. The commission continues to meet via Zoom, but there has been some rumbling in the group. Some of the members are ready to, to go back in person. So probably within the next few months, we'll be back in the chambers. Couple of larger projects that have been sort of spotlighted within the commission, the Watkins Park Skate Park, Windy Ridge Multi-Use Trails. Those two projects are moving forward by volunteer groups. The spring ball field allocations are currently being addressed within the commission. Takes a couple of months, a lot of town staff involved, a lot of communication with the, the presidents of the, the youth organizations. So I will keep you posted on that. At the next meeting, I'll provide an update to the commission on the POS grant that we applied for to replace Summit Ridge Playground. And just a side note, Phase Two of Watkins Play Place will open in about two or three weeks. The company that's installing the playground had to wait a few weeks to let the temperatures warm up before they could lay the rubber matting. So if you see the playground fenced off, it, it will be opened shortly, so keep an eye out for that. And with that, I have a meeting with mayor and town staff this Friday to talk about construction of Phase Three next year. So we're pretty close to finally completing this project, and that's it for me.
All amazing news, thank you. We'll move to EDC Commission and Planning Commission, presented by Councilmember Munder.
All right, thank you, Council President. I would like, before I start my report, I would just like to read out a couple of community items that I wasn't, I missed my chance to at earlier in the meeting. I want to say something that's called Stay Local, Play Local, and Buy Local. The town has many things families can do here in town, like its wonderful parks, events, and businesses. One such business is the Mount Airy Bowling Lanes on Senate Street. This business is, this business offers exposure to a sport that is unique to the Mid-Atlantic region known as duck pen bowling. So come out and support a locally-owned business that offers family fun, is close by, and won't cost you more than about a couple bucks in gas to get there. They offer events, leagues for various groups, women and wine bowling nights, food, craft beer nights, et cetera. Their phone number is 301-829-0710. So give them a call and reserve a lane and enjoy a night out with the family. Also, as warmer summer months are coming and COVID restrictions are vanishing, there are two wonderful swim clubs here in town that are looking for members. The Ridge Swim Club on Beck Avenue, which is close to the post office, and the Nottingham Swim Club in the Nottingham Community. So if interested in getting outside this summer, please look into joining one of these two wonderful clubs. I know, I'm taking a while, sorry, Mr. President. The third one is a new 501(c) in, in town that we all were invited to a check presentation to, but unfortunately, I was unable to meet, get to the second one. It's called Kick, Kick Cares. This is a 501(c) started in 2020 by a local 11-year-old by the name of Kaylee Colbert with a mission to purchase, fill, and deliver care packages to families who have children in surrounding neonatal intensive care units. And, and she is looking for sponsors and participants for the inaugural golf tournament on May 13th at 2022 at the Links of Shaladon. So please visit her website, www.ki-c-k-a-r-e-s.org to register or obtain sponsorship information. All donations are tax deductible. I just want to say, when I met this young person, I was greatly impressed by her passion for this topic, and I'm sorry I was not able to attend your recent ceremony. It's safe for you to receive a donation check. So I'm also, will be asking the mayor and town staff to post the information regarding the golf event on the website. Two other items for the local scout troops. Received something on my door for Troop Impact 460, which is the food drive, which it appears that they will be coming around collecting food starting Sunday, March 13th at 11:00 a.m. All donations will go to the Mount Airy net. If you have any questions or missed donations, email at membership@troop460.com. The second Boy Scout thing that was to the door this weekend was the annual mulch, mulch sale for BSA Troop 1190. So please give a gentleman by the name of Scott Monroe a call at 443-632-5628 to place your orders. That's for the community news. Now I'll go to my report, Mr. President. Sorry, I'll make these quick since it was a late month on the meetings. EDC meeting was February, was held February 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall. I would like to welcome our newest, newest commission member at that meeting was Morgan Rock. An update was given by Bill Butts and Wayne Evans of the Mount Airy Senior Task Support Group regarding what the seniors are looking for in, in this area, and they reported on efforts by the group to have a shuttle running from Wildwood to the farmer's market this summer. So hopefully, that can come to fruition and give some people a ride from the Wildwood area down to the farmer's market on Wednesdays. Also, the first round of Welcome Home Mount Airy bags were assembled and are currently in the process of being handed out to the new residents of town. The long-awaited community map project is nearing completion, which I believe Councilwoman Reed started on a couple of years ago. The, it is currently up online on the town's website. Also, we are seeking sponsors for the print version of it. So if you have any, if you want to be a sponsor for this map, please contact Melissa Thorne at Town Hall. Update on the two existing grant programs we're giving. Let's see, MAMSA and the Greater Chamber of Commerce gave their updates. MAMSA, I would like to give a shout out to the upcoming event next Saturday, which is the Lucky Golden Ticket Chocolate Crawl along Main Street from 12:00 to 4:00. And live music will be offered at the plaza next to Town Hall from 2:00 to 4:00. And basically, if a person finds one of the 10 golden tickets, they will receive a sweet candy bouquet from Candy Blossoms and give, and a gift card for a Main Street business. Tickets are $5.00 each. It can be purchased in advance on the MAMSA website until 7:00 p.m. on March 18th or during the event at the Yellow Tent on Main Street in the plaza while supplies last. Another upcoming event for MAMSA in April is the Easter Egg Scavenger Hunt. That will take place between April 11th to the 16th in downtown here. The farmer's market is returning this year once again, from June 1st to September 28th on Wednesdays. And there are a lot more events listed on the MAMSA website, so please go to the website if you're interested in becoming a member or to see what other events are there. The next EDC meeting will be March 23rd at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall. For the Planning Commission, that meeting was held February 28th at Town Hall. Two concept plans were approved. S20-0031, which is for the Mount Airy Medical Eye Center Building, which will be located next to Five Guys, kind of Five Guys next to Cowboy Internet. And then S21-0015, which is Twin Arch Industrial Subdivision, Lot 7A, was a concept plan that was approved for the final build-out of self-storage units for the Twin Arch Storage. The commission approved the staff recommendations for the division of allocation for the categories of the available water and storage capacity of town, which will be coming back before the town council soon. They, they took action on three master plan rezoning requests. So I'll just give a quick definition of what these are. I'm sorry, it's taking long again, Jason, sorry. As part of the master planning process, landowners can request rezoning of their property. The commission heard and made decisions on several applications. The decision by the Planning Commission on any request for a rezoning change during this process is only a recommendation to the town council for when it takes up the master plan in 2023. The three requests were for 1302 South Main Street, which was approved at, which, the applicant's request was approved from a change from residential existing to neighborhood professional for that address only. 302 Watersville Road, the applicant wanted a change to mixed use from the current zoning of residential R2. The commission denied this request, but went ahead with a staff recommendation of changing the zoning to neighborhood professional. And then 1011 East Ridgeville Boulevard, the applicant wanted a change from residential existing to industrial. The commission denied this request, this requested change. Upcoming meetings of importance for the month of March is our, the Master Plan Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, March 10th at 6:00 p.m. in Town Hall. Two meetings regarding the upcoming developments of Green Tree and Beck property will take place on March 14th. Green Tree Public Hearing, I believe, is between the town council and Planning Commission, if any of the members of the town council can attend or are encouraged to, is at 7:00 p.m. And, and there will be a charrette for the Beck property here in Town Hall at 7:30 p.m., which means that the draft plans for the development of the Beck property will be shown, and the public will be allowed to talk with the developer during this meeting to obtain more information on, on the development and to offer suggestions and to talk with the developer. Both of these will be held in Town Hall. The next Planning Commission is March 28th at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall. And that concludes my reports. Thank you, council member. Oh, question, yes, sir.
It, it may be more of a Tom question.
Oh.
Question for you, but, but when you're saying that these rezonings were approved, they were approved in terms of a, a recommendation in the master plan?
They were approved, if I'm understanding the process right, if Tom can correct me a few, they were approved, they were, they were approved as a recommendation only in the master plan to be recommended to the council for their final approval of what they.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. Ultimately, the town council will approve the master plan, and then beyond that even, will have to approve a comprehensive ordinance that rezones these properties. It's ultimately going to be up to the town council.
Okay, so what was approved were recommendations?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think to put them on a list, I think, is what they said during the meeting, to put them on a list to go for the master plan. Thank you, council member.
Thank you.
We'll move to recycling and sanitation. Councilmember Demeter?
All right, thank you. So we didn't have a meeting in February, but I wanted to remind you of some upcoming events to benefit our citizens. We'll have a shred and battery recycle event that'll be on April 2nd from 9:00 to 12:00 at Watkins Park, and that's going to be limited to the 21771 zip code. We're participating in National Drug Takeback Day, that's April 23rd, from 9:00 to 1:00, and we're again partnering with our police department on that. I appreciate all their help. And then we'll have a spring bulk pickup, April 30th, from 9:00 to 1:00, and that'll be at the municipal parking lot, and we're going to be partnering with some of the local Boy Scout troops. They will be volunteering to help pick up the items from residents and bring those to the municipal lot. We'll be updating the 2022 yard waste dates on the town website and also through the Recycle Coach app. And our next recycle meeting is March 16th at 7:00 o'clock. I also wanted to highlight, Chief Reitz mentioned, we had our first Main Street Safety Task Force meeting, and we've made some really good progress in standing up the Main Street Safety Task Force, which was announced by the mayor in January, and he's asked me to be the liaison for, for this task force. We have a core team of six volunteers from. We have a core team of six volunteers from different parts of Main Street strategically and from businesses. We had our first meeting. It was principally a formational meeting. It was the first opportunity for residents to really sit down and voice their specific concerns, talk with one another, talk with the chief and Corporal Brooks about the issues at hand, and I think it was a really good conversation, and the chief highlighted that the, you know, the big plus was just sitting down and starting the dialogue. And some of the suggestions for how we're going to move forward were actually provided from our, our police department representatives. So again, Chief, thank you so much. Glad to have you. We need you and looking forward to working with you. The focus is primarily on traffic and pedestrian safety, but the group agreed to also look at personal safety and property safety issues as they arise, for example, associated with businesses. We agreed that we need a set of clear objectives and to come up with some specific issues and recommendations, and then also to be able to measure whether or not we've made progress on those. So our, we have some follow-on actions. One is to come up with a kind of a mission and objective statement, and we're going to work on that and collect some behind-the-scenes information, and we'll probably have another meeting in about a month and a half. I'm looking forward to coordinating with Councilmember Galetti on Streets and Roads because there's an obvious cross-talk between the two and leveraging of resources with the Streets and Roads Commission between this task force and then leveraging the resources of the town. So if there's any other individuals that want to participate in the task force, we welcome that, and please let me know. And Mayor, I look forward to sitting down with you and giving you a more detailed report and where we're headed. Last thing is, Councilmember Munder mentioned this, but I wanted to recognize Donna Marie Needle and the entire EDC team for all the great work they do, and I also helped out with their Welcome Home Mount Airy Initiative, helping to stuff bags and then walk around neighborhoods and deliver them to our new residents. And I have to say, it was kind of a fun experience. It was kind of like going out and campaigning again and getting to meet our new residents. And it's true, we have a great town, we have a set of great residents, and they, I think they were truly sincerely appreciative of, of the package. I also want to thank Donna Marie and town staff, especially Ashley, for working up a message on safe driving and traffic safety that's included in the Welcome Home booklet. And so there's a page in here that basically says to the new residents, "We value safe driving within the town of Mount Airy. We would like you to also value safe driving, and we care about you as part of our Mount Airy community." And by driving safely and driving to the posted speed limits, you are actually contributing to all the things that we cherish in Mount Airy, which is a safe community, safe streets, great place to raise a family, quiet neighborhood, et cetera. So thank you to the town for working that up, and Ashley did a great job, and I think the message is, slow down for your hometown. That's the message that's in the booklet, so that's my report. Oh, last thing, Mr. Mayor, I know it's all in fun. You gave a little parting shot earlier about the impact fee memo. Let me just say, I think you were too hard on yourself. You actually started with a B-, and I got you to an A-, so anything to help the town, but thank you.
I may get on the honor roll. Thank you.
You may, keep working on it.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll move to Streets and Roads and Beautification. Councilwoman Galetti.
Thank you. So Beautification Commission, I'm going to start with that. There's a lot going on, and I can't say enough about this commission and how much they do. I'm not going to give you all the details because, again, they have a Facebook page. You can go and see everything that's happening, but as you can imagine, with spring coming, they're mulching, they're weeding, they're planting. Again, thank you to our amazing staff. Ashley got a grant for beautification, a $5,000 grant for trees, so they're going to be looking at natives. They talk about stuff that's way beyond my comprehension of plants, and it's, if you ever want to be enlightened and learn about what to plant and what not to plant, go to one of their meetings. So thank you to staff for doing that. Also, too, on Facebook, it's, is it weekly, the I Heart Mount Airy? There's a lot of information. I don't know if we talk about that enough through Facebook. Our staff gives updates on things, and if you go there, you can get a lot of information on various different things. I know during the pandemic, it was weekly. I'm not sure if it's, but just keep an eye out for that. And what else? They do still have, we still have some ornaments here at Town Hall for sale?
Probably.
I think we do, if you want to get a Christmas ornament. And the meeting should have been March 15th, but it's the Historical Society Dinner that night, is what she said. So they, the meeting, next meeting is March 15th upstairs, since there's going to be some hearings down here in council chambers. Again, look at their Facebook page, and you can get all the information on the amazing Beautification Commission. Streets and Roads, we did not meet in February. It's every other month. We will meet in March. I did have an email from some residents I wanted to go through really quick. Our meeting will be the last Tuesday in March, which is, is that the 29th? It's 6:30 here at council chambers. We did some changes, and I'm going to just go through because that's all I have, but I want to, I want to highlight this because this will be brought up to Streets and Roads, but our staff really, it's, we're really lucky in the staff we have. So we put in the raised crosswalks, not speed bumps, on Rising Ridge Road because we have FCPS bus stops there, started a couple of years ago. So I have to read this because I have to tell Barney, thank you. He was big on going out with me and reading with the residents, but I just want to throw out, this is why we do what we do, and it goes in line with our Safe Streets Initiative. It's, I'm going to, "With the warmer weather, my kids are outside more, and I can't tell you how much safer it feels to be in the neighborhood specifically around our four-way stop. The traffic signs and raised crosswalk have made a world of difference with the speeding. I really can't thank you enough, and I know several neighbors feel the same. Occasionally, I notice a car going through the stop sign without stopping, particularly at night, but the raised crosswalk still slows the speed of those vehicles. I appreciate you reeducating the people who have complained," which is, if they weren't speed bumped, they're raised crosswalks. Another resident, "We have noticed a real positive difference in traffic since the speed humps and stop signs were installed. No longer do cars and trucks come down the hill at high speed." They praise me. I'm going to skip that. Cars now even seem to be more polite at our intersections, stopping at the stop sign and waving to them, a little more neighborly and more safe. Stop signs and raised crosswalks have made a difference. The issue is now people are running the stop signs. They make a recommendation, which I know the chief is aware of, that in the evening, maybe some enforcement over there, Bryson Park, they are saying they're seeing cars after dark, which the parks are closed, so maybe put that on your radar for something to check out down there, and that's it. So again, they thank town staff for all the work they did to get that done, so that, we're getting there, baby steps. This took us, what, two years, three years? I have to add a couple of years because of COVID, about three years to get done. So we're working on it, but we do, as Councilmember DeMater said, we need the residents to understand that this is your town, and these are your streets, and these are all of our children playing on these streets, so let's just slow it down and respect safe speed. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up is Water and Sewer Commission and Mount Airy Sustainability Commission, and that is me. I had both of my meetings this month. The Commission, Water Sewer Commission, talked about rainfall and the wastewater treatment plant. There was some discussion about how our water is holding steady and being replenished by the rainfall. However, there, we are still down as far as our rainfall amounts, so just something that we, in the Commission, just kind of keep an eye on. We're still working on our PSAs, working with Ashley on those as far as residential stormwater management, and we will continue to see progress on that. We also had a nice discussion about stormwater management ponds, their purpose, and making sure that residents were clear on that as well, and probably looking forward to doing something a little bit more education-wise as far as the stormwater management ponds. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 6th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. The Sustainability Commission met, had a great discussion. Community Garden, as the mayor alluded to earlier, gates were going up, fencing's going up. Currently, we have 23 people that are signed up for garden plots. We're looking for certainly a few more. If you would like to grab your plot, please contact Town Hall. We can get you signed up. Ashley mentioned that some of the solar lights were put up at the dog park. Those were updated and completed. I'm personally working on a Adopt a Road program in collaboration with the Sustainability Commission to help make sure that our town streets are free of debris. Currently, right now, Rotary Club already let me know that they would like Rising Ridge Road and will put up a sign for them, so keep an eye out for those Adopt a Road programs for Mount Airy. We have a recycling master list that is live up on our website. This lets you know what can be recycled, and believe it or not, we went above and beyond what you just shoved in your blue recycling bin. You can literally recycle everything, so please check out that list. You just have to make the effort to go out and bring it somewhere, and the Welcome Home Program was already mentioned. That next meeting is next month? Please hold. Sorry. Yes, next month, oh, I wrote down the date, and then I lost it. April 20th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. That will conclude my report. Tom, your report?
Since our last meeting, I attended the Planning Commission meeting in part due to the discussion that started and will continue on ordinance 2022-5, changed to the NP district. Also, worked a bit on the MOU relative to the parking lot north of North 8, North Main Street, so the one with the plumery truck, and we got red lines back. We've had some back and forth. I shot red lines back to the owner, Mr. Scranton, today, mainly dealing with timelines and laying out when, by when he has to have a certain degree of detail to his drawings, basically. And then finally, as the mayor knows, as Barney knows, the removal of the track at CSX is imminent, so we are in touch now with the contractor to get that done. We're going to have the right under the contract to select certain pieces for a model or for display, so we'll be undertaking that in very short order. That's my report.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Councilmembers, you receive your town administrator report. The code enforcement report was sent electronic earlier this, today, and you also have the zoning report in front of you. We will have two closed meetings this evening following this general session. The first is 3-305B3. This is to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related there to Harrison-Lashere property, as well as acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related there to Buffalo Road and Summit Ridge Park. At the conclusion of these closed meetings, the Town Council meeting will be adjourned. Councilmember DeMater?
Aye.
Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
Poirier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Galetti?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into a closed session. At that time, we will end our regular session. Thank you, everyone.